Get the side, pull it down, this whole turns on and then you just hit it. There goes. There you go.
Okay. Call the meeting of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District, um, May 15, 2014, to order at 7:00 PM. First of all, uh, any agenda changes?
Yes.
Whoa, okay.
I'd like to add something to new business, please.
Okay, what would you want to add?
I'd like to add, uh, budget and program review discussion.
Budget, first, program, review, discussion. Okay, anything else?
Yes, I'd like to add, uh, swim team vision and sustainability.
Swim, team, vision, and sustain- Okey dokey, anything else? Steve?
No questions.
Okay, board issues. Any issues from the board, other than the two new business things? Public comments, any public comments?
None.
Okay, minutes approval. Two sets of minutes. Uh, first, the, uh, minutes from the regular monthly meeting of April 17th, 2014. Um, you got them a few days ago and they're, the first page is on the handout that, um, for the material tonight. Would anybody be willing to approve the minutes as circulated?
I'd like to make a motion and we approve the minutes from Thursday, April 17th, 2014, Ezra.
Thank you. A second or?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, and then the minutes for Tuesday, May 6th, special meeting, that was the pump meeting. Would anybody be willing to move them as circulated? One page.
I make a motion and we approve the minutes from Tuesday, May 6th, 2014, Ezra.
A second or?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Voucher review. It's the next page in the, um, would somebody please move the vouchers and the payroll?
I move that the district pay vouchers number 6220 through 6251 in the amount of $27,307, $27,307 and 43 cents and payroll transfers from MNO account to the payroll account of $41,943.76.
Okay, a second or?
A second or.
Okay, discussion.
Is this the time when we talk about what's in there?
Yes, talk about the next 25 pages.
Excellent. 25 pages. Um, on the voucher report, I noted that we had omitted the names of, of patrons who had received refunds, uh, but the fifth one up, uh, there is a reimbursement for the daddy-daughter dance which the patron's name was not omitted. Um, I think that we should be consistent in how we administer that, we either omit them or we don't.
Point taken, I guess we can tell.
That's all I have on that one.
Okay.
I know it was, it's really important in, in areas where some kind of medical, uh, payment was made for someone to, whether it's TB, John, whatever it was, I know that was originally where we had moved to strike names for HIPAA privacy. Uh, but I'm all for, I guess, taking specific names out, uh, if that's, if that's beneficial or, or would be more beneficial to leave them in so we know.
Well, the information is all public record, so, uh, if somebody could submit through a public records request to get that patron's name, for the purpose of this report, I personally don't think it's necessary to have the patron's name in there. Um, I think that, I think crossing it out and putting patron is, is sufficient to identify what, you know, along with, with what was refunded is sufficient to identify for our purpose here.
Because we have the actual record of the person, which is people anonymous, and then if we wanted to look into it further, we could.
Is that, that a consensus then?
Yes.
Okay, I agree. Any other comments on the vouchers?
I do, I have a couple. Um, several months ago, I asked the question, what are bonus points and what are they good for? Has that ever been figured out?
Perhaps that.
I take that, I, I, I take that as a no. The question, G, uh, Director, was, um, every time the card is used to make a purchase, it's a, it's, it's a rewards type card, so rewards are accumulated, you know, at what point can the district use those rewards for its benefit, um, and what could those rewards be used for? Uh, I did, I did note that, uh, we had done an oil change in one of our vehicles, um, but I think that, and I don't know the specifics and I was kind of hoping that maybe Matt was here to, uh, provide additional information, but I think, I wonder why the oil change costs $97.79. There are other places, I mean, there are other ways to change oil which, which could have been cheaper. Um, so I had that question. Uh, on page, on the, uh, credit card bill for Erica Miller, um, it would be helpful if there was, there was an expense, uh, on April 25th for $725.75 to Costco Business Delivery, with the note that it was concessions and hospitality. Uh, it'd be helpful if we could get a breakdown as to what was concessions, which is potentially revenue that will be coming back in, and what is hospitality, which is money that we won't see again.
Along the same lines with that, um, the visa, the March statement, I, the bill is, um, I was just trying to tie the totals on, well, maybe it's because I'm not looking at the right state, this says March statements, and it looks like a lot of the billing in this is for April, and so, I'm not quite sure, I, I couldn't tie the totals in these visa bills to this $4,500, assuming that's because they're for the April statement. So, is that because the April statement is not out there yet, or, uh, are these March bill visa statements in the previous?
A lot of these are, I think, uh, unfortunately, our cashier who's doing a lot of the ordering, she doesn't have the card yet, so she's, he's lying, Wendy Allen Bangs dragging their feet, but, uh, so, I think some of these were March and have just been carried over onto the April statement. The Oriental Trading, I think, was a March, uh, early April.
We, we should have the statements for, those March statements.
That would be an inherent question, Ezra.
Yes.
I, I just care my receipts.
Okay, so that's something maybe, uh-
We have to follow that.
Director can follow up on, okay.
Anything else?
I don't have anything. It's like boiler, spa, stuff in the, it's in the $500 range. It seems to be pretty consistent lately, I'm sure that'll get better with the warmer weather, but, uh, it's like that's kind of a common bill now, it's in that $7,000 range. I don't think it was as much before, was it?
It's a huge difference.
Yeah, and I know the rates have gone up.
Yeah, it used to be down in the fours and fives on a consistent basis, so that is fairly high, and I don't know if that's directly tied into us having to manually enter in or what, but, um, it just, I think it reiterates the importance of fixing our system.
I think that goes with that interagency agreement or-
Yeah.
-protection, and I think we should make sure that we address that in there and make sure we track it. Okay, um, can I have a motion to accept the vouchers as reviewed?
Yes.
So, we have it, so, are you ready for the vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Um, but there are some questions, like that master card. Okay, we're up to staff reports, um, and this is head coach report, uh, Northwoodby Fitness Club Aerobics, Aquatics Director, Facilities and Maintenance, attendance report. I'm not sure how you want to do that. Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to sort of oversee them or if you wanted to. Head coaches' report.
Sir?
Okay, I see this thing was sort of faint type and heavy type and so on, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what we're doing here.
That's the strategic plan, uh, part of which is going through USAS, a top recognition program.
Yes.
Level one, uh, those items that are faded are, uh, completed steps from prior meetings and publications where our strategy is highlighted, heavier items are ones that are, uh, are current or are additions this month.
Coach, um, I got a whole bunch of questions. Um, first off, how many swimmers did we have that haven't fallen happening, did each individual meet, uh, all the happenings in May Flowers, how many did we send?
Fifty-one in the all the happenings, uh, May Flowers, there were six.
Six, alright. And with our total numbers, you know, we got some good numbers there, but how many do we actually see on a consistent basis?
Say that again, how many do we have?
Do we see on a consistent basis? We got 24 down for masters, and I know masters come and go, it's kind of, we, we don't have 24 here in the pool, and granted, I, I've only swum at noon, um, but how many do you normally see, how many do we see on a regular practice?
We're generally running, I mean, it obviously varies from squad to squad.
Right.
Um, you're running anywhere from 50% to, or 60% on the lower squads to upwards of 70% in the upper squads, so.
Okay.
Right.
Alright, how many for the masters?
We're only a pound off.
Yeah, I mean, I, and that's a hard one to gauge, I know, you know.
It's, it's a hard one to gauge. I mean, you know, I'd say generally, we're running probably five per practice.
Okay.
We have some people that are on masters punch cards.
Right.
And some of them are, you know, working earlier, work for.
How many, yeah, how many do we have coming in with the junior seniors in the mornings, the junior seniors in the morning, just seniors, I, I don't know. Uh, but how many masters are we seeing in the mornings, because I know there used to be a lot that would come in, like the early morning practice, and then there was a bunch that used to come at lunch. That was a lunchtime swimmer, because that was just way too early and I don't like it. But, what are those numbers looking like?
Um, generally, we're seeing, and, is there junior seniors swimmers coming, uh, once, maybe twice in the, in the mornings during the week? Masters, again, you're running five-ish, you know, or, we have some people that are, you know, training, doing, you know, ironmen, ironwomen, uh, there's some people, you know, a couple of people out in the military.
Okay.
And it's typical, in the mornings, that's, we say, we have a lot of, we have a lot of swimmers that are taking up the lanes and stuff.
Okay. Yeah, there is some, just as a interjection here on a procedural question, um, Commissioner Walton has, uh, some material under his subject, which is in new bu- business, which directly relates to this, and I'm wondering if we, would, would the room accept that if we took that information and sort of worked that through with the head coach reports we're doing all at once and then we don't do it twice? Would that be good? Okay, Dave, do you want to, great. Um, I just have one question while he's getting his stuff. Um, what does head coach tenure with team more than one year? Have you been here for more than one year now?
Yes.
In fact, so that, that's past tense and it's not something we're putting in as sort of a requirement for, for the, that's, that's what's happened, and it's not a matter of sort of, uh, thinking ahead that you have to be here for more than one year to get this phase of the thing or something. Okay, thanks.
I went back through the, um, through the minutes, starting in January 2012 up to present, because I wanted to see where we were as far as, and I just looked at the younger swim team, I didn't look at masters. Um, and this has not tied into financials at all, so we're just looking at, at share numbers of, of bodies that we have registered as members of the swim team and how many we have that consistently get, if you will, clocked in as they come in the door. Um, so over on the left, you'll see by month, the number of members that we have recorded. Blank spaces means that either the, uh, information was missing from the minutes or, uh, there was a couple of months where I couldn't find minutes, minutes, so I don't know if there was, we just didn't have a board meeting that month, or, um, if that information was missing. So the blank numbers mean that there was no data that I could, I could find there. Uh, down, and then of course, you, you see the chart graph, uh, with the number of members at the bottom in blue, attendance in orange. Down at the bottom, I took the year, uh, January through December, and added up the number of members and the number of attendants, and then divided by the number of months that I had data for. For example, if I had data for 10 months, I divided by 10. If I had data for nine months, I divided by nine. And what you'll see there is the, on average, the number of times a member of, of the swim team clocked in or was counted in the water during that year, if you will. For example, 2012, we had an average of 100.3 members, uh, across the year. We had an average of 1,869, um, visits to the pool by those members for swimming purposes, uh, with an attendance per member of 18.6. 2013, that drops down to 10.1, and so far, for the first five months of this year, going through the end of May, uh, sorry, through the end of, um, actually, sorry, that should be four months, I apologize. So that number's going to be skewed, but, uh, I should take, uh, six, I should take that number and divide it by four instead of five, but you'll see, it drops even further. That's reflected in the bar graph. Um, then, a little bit further down at the, at the bottom, membership loss since 2012 in January, we've lost 26.4% of our swim team. They haven't come back. For one reason or another, our numbers have dropped 26.4%, but our attendance has dropped 65.6%, which says a, a couple of things. We're not meeting the needs of these kids and they're choosing not to come, or, um, our record keeping really needs a lot of work to properly account. Maybe they're here, we're just not catching up.
Are you taking into account the economy, how much money?
Well, you, that, that can be taken into account, yes.
My, my question is, I mean-
Yes, go ahead.
My question here though, and, I've got two.
Go ahead.
The first one would be, I can't remember, my son timer's just kicking in, was spring break in April or in, um, March for us?
March.
It was March?
The, no, April.
Or April and March.
The first weekend, the-
Okay, so that, that may have come after that, it's hard to tell without the last two years. And the other thing to piggyback on, Dave, is some of this is financial, because we pay, as a swim team parent, I pay on a monthly basis. So that's a flat fee, it doesn't change how many times they come. So if I'm paying a flat fee, why wouldn't I, you know, bring my kid here? Now, I'll, I'll be honest, my kid's missed a lot because she's sick, she had that wonderful flu that was going on. So, is it flu-based, and, and I don't know, but, you know, that, that is a concern, because if I'm paying the same amount each month, you know, I, I want my kid to come as much as I can, because I'm going to get the money, the money back on my butt.
Right.
But, I, I definitely can see some of the, these financial-
Yeah, it's a spring, like fall too, I mean, when you look at other activities, they may keep their, you know, dues up or pay more, but you'll have to try, they're still doing other things, and they may not have the opportunity to keep your-
Yeah, the two numbers that are below are both in the, in the summertime, which, when we were talking at one point, and not about this, but just in general, the enrollment tends to drop a bit when the kids run off the track, and, um, that's the only, they're very interesting numbers, eh? So you two have your topics, so you keep going and, um, let me listen.
Oh, mine's, I, I think mine's a little separate.
Is it?
Yeah, because I, I, I think Dave-
Dave, do you want to pursue?
Obviously, definite things to pursue.
Uh, well-
I think we can coordinate it together.
The conversation I have is, is, are we meeting the needs of these kids? If these kids, if, if we consistently have 70 people on, on the rolls, separated between any of the groups from senior down to novice, and, and including the high school, if we consistently are having 70 people on the rolls, but, where they're not coming to swim, taking the full advantage of, of coming here to swim, we're obviously not, um, progressing them along competitively as much as we should if we're a competitive team. Um, I had one parent just today, uh, whose, whose swimmer, um, is in the upper echelons, I, I, I'm not going to mention who necessarily, but they said that, you know, the team seems to be okay being a recreational team, and it, it, it's not necessarily meeting the needs of, of that parent for that summer, which is, which is fine if that's the direction we want to go, you know, but our mission statement talks about us being a competitive team, which, you know, we strive to be, we should be, but we need to somehow get these kids wanting to be in the pool, wanting to push themselves, wanting to drive, which, you know, again, if this is just nothing more than, than us failing to keep proper records, then, then we need to rectify that, because this is what, these, these are the numbers that are going out and being reported, is that are now part of the minutes, which are now part of the history of, of the team and history of the pool, and, you know, these are the things that, that, uh, people are going to look at when we go back and say, hey, public, you know, we, we want to, we want more money. We want to fund the next levy to keep programs like this, which are beneficial to our community alive. You know, but right now, it doesn't look like even the members, uh, some of the members, I know that there are, there are some that are, that are highly motivated and highly driven, but it doesn't look like some of them are, are thinking of their membership on the swim team as being something important.
Your report, and this conversation's related to it, so, do you have any responses or?
For school records, our goals are 70% every single swim. We come yard closer to being that, 69% at our own rate. We go, we go out of our way to contact families personally and individually, to try and encourage them to participate. Every step in this club, every step in this club is first of all measured based on practice attendance. And so, if we're sitting down with any kid at any level, not even where they are at this point, where their potential is for the future, the first topic of conversation is practice attendance. In a meeting just, uh, yesterday, excuse me, just this morning, where this practice attendance had fallen off, not my squad, but his other squad, I kept an eye on, I met with the parent, took the time out of my day, during a busy day to do so. It turned out that the kid was facing fear of competition. This is not the only kid in the present. We spent almost a half hour breaking that down. This is the kind of service that I am providing to our members. The kid's going to show up on Monday at practice with a new look towards competing. I can't change how a kid sees things or what environment they're raised in, what I can do is encourage them to the best sport, to the best sport in the world. These are hard facts that we depend our future on. Coming to practice, if we come to practice after that commitment, a consistency that is necessary to make it in this sport. We are not a recreational team, period. We are not a recreational team.
Coach, and I don't think anybody's attacking you personally, and, and I know, and, excuse me, Steve, I know that, uh, you're doing your best, I've seen it, and one of the things I'm talking about when I talk about budget and program review, we have, we're done with the past, right? I think everybody on the sport wants to be done with the past and move forward. And I think, I, I can't speak for Dave, uh, you know, with the numbers, you know, with the final goal, because I know there was more to the proposal than just bringing the numbers.
And I'll get to that.
Okay. But, I think what we want to do is build for the future. So, that's what, I, I know that's what I'm looking at, and I'm almost 100% positive, and I haven't spoken with Dave, but I'm pretty sure that's what Dave's looking at. So, when we start looking at things, I think we need to look towards the future, make sure we're all on the same goal and on the same path, and that's what it is. So we're not looking at throwing stones here, we're looking at building. Alright?
Well, I think, and I think Phil's, Phil's comment response is perfectly-
Oh, yeah, no, I understand, I just wanted to make sure he understood where, I think most of us become.
Gino.
It's really hard to overlook the past year and a half, the poison that's, that's came out, and that's what it's actually been. When you look at what, when Neil left, when he was really accused of, and Steve Woodger came in, he attacks it around him, attacks it again on Bill, I mean, the senior and junior kids left, they, uh, they always encouraged the younger kids. When you look back at the practices, when Neil was here, you know, the, the senior and the junior kids have inspired young kids. When those kids left, it was that, that element that was missing, and somebody to look up to. Why did they leave? You know, you can look at it any which way, but Sunday, man, but, uh, there were a lot of angry people that just couldn't let go. You have five board members, four of which have kids on their mind. Of those four board members, I mean, that swim, two of the board members have kids that are certainly in Bellham, a fully supported program. It's really hard to sit here and, and really feel that you have the best interest of, of this park district and ANWAC in, in your mind, when you drive two and a half hours a day to take your kids to swim in Bellham, you add up how much money that costs, you know, gas, time, and you come in here and you're going to be an honest broker with our swim coach. I, I don't see how you could. And, you know, um, it's hard to sit here and listen to this, because, you know, the slide that's went on, in large part, was because the parents, the way they continued this, this poison every month, month after month after month. And I'll tell you what, when I sit in the viewing room in here, it always got talked about, just the negativity, I don't want no more of it, they'd say, and they leave. I don't want to be a part of this, why would I want to be a part of something when everybody's always grating, and they would leave? And, uh, that was a, that wasn't just one or two people, that was a, it was quite a few people who felt that way, and, uh, you know, I'd like to think we're going to move in a positive direction, but every time you think it's going down that road, it just seems like something else gets thrown out, and I, you just want to wait and see.
My, my comments, my, me bringing this up is not about- My comments, me bringing this up is not about Coach Patterson. Coach, I support you. I do have a child that swims in Bellingham, that is true, but I also have a child that swims here. And I support, I support the program. That's why I introduced this as the vision of sustainability, because as is, in the direction we're, where we are, I don't see it as being sustainable. And some of that does fall back to financials. But the idea behind NWA is to build and grow and have that excitement and positive influence, not just for, you know, the 70 members, but to get that back up, you know, 100, 120, as many kids as we can, as we can impact and touch. That's where my conversation is going. This is not, this is not, you know, beating on Coach Patterson.
Okay, well, you brought this out here, and we've got Bill's response on what he's trying to do with the team, and where do you want to go with this? What's next?
I didn't say that. Yes, Bill and I, we have discussed this business plan, this teaching plan, and it looks great. It's gonna be very grass root, and it's gonna bring more people on. My only issue, you know, it's not, you know, like you said about Bill, it's not about Coach Bill, but if you're on the board for NWA here in this pool, I don't understand how your kids could be swimming somewhere else. And that's just me. You know, I think it's a fair question, it's not pointing at anybody, but I'm just saying, you know, if you're gonna be on the board, just trying to help out here, set the standard, guys, send your people somewhere.
I think it's a lot of history which we have to get behind.
I don't know the history, but that's my first opinion.
People ran into big rocks and the gravel road, and I think that they responded. Yes, you may, Sean.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to address that, and my kid swims for me. First off, as Dave said and I said, my questions to you and my comments coming further on aren't directed at Bill. Bill and I talk all the time, and I have no complaints there. However, I think we have a viable, you know, we need to look firmly at what we're doing with the future. I know you're very active with the younger kids. I see that, and you're building with the future. And I get it, and I think that, you know, you can't build the house until you have a solid foundation. Totally get it, on track. And I think what the chair said, that there's history, I think you have kids that swim at a different level, and I don't want to use names, but you have one kid that swims at a very high level, and because of the histories and everything else, went somewhere else. And I think, you know, that happens with swim clubs all over. If you look at, and I'll use Bendy, okay, Bendy's a good one to use. She swims, she doesn't swim for anybody here, she swam, her parents have been in three clubs in the last year, two years, last two years, she's been in three clubs. And the reason that Bendy has gone to all three clubs is because of conflicts with coaches. Her parents want a certain type of, she swims at a certain level, and they want a certain coaching forum, they're gonna look for that. So I think when you get to children that are at a higher level, that's gonna happen, you know, and it's gonna happen quite frequently. If you look at Bendy, she swims on the national level. If you look at some of our commissioners' children, they swim not at the state level, not at the region level, at the national level. And we're not talking 20th through 30th, we're talking in the top five. And if that child, and that's why, you know, Director, and I know Coach understands this, he saw it in Oregon, I'm sure, that's why those children will go to different coaches. Is this gonna be the last coach up in Bellingham or someplace else that child goes? Nope. I can tell you right now, that kid's gonna swim for a long time.
I said, just coming in, that's my observation.
Yep.
It's nothing to direct anybody to swim.
You're doing a great job for how sore that back looks. Do you want to take a break for two minutes? Do you want to walk, or are you okay? Okay, keep going.
I guess, I think we got some good questions here, and if I can take you back on what we started, part of what I wanted to do with the program review is bring that into the budget review. And to bring the program directors with their numbers to the budget review, and a budget review by all of us.
Yes.
Prior to August. All right, and when we look at that budget, because that gives us a couple months to think about things, all right, we shouldn't be looking at numbers in September, and you guys know this better than me, we shouldn't be looking at the numbers in September to make decisions on a budget in October. I think we need to do a workshop. Before then, it would be great for you as a new director, we could do it with the five of us, and we understand the past couple of years and going forward, and it gets us all on the same page. Part of that budget review, as in that workshop, we should do a program review at the same time. We're not throwing stones when we do that, and I don't think that's what Dave had in mind here either. It's, hey, let's look at this. Let's look at this and let's say, hey, is it an anomaly? Is April that time of year, like you said, we got spring break, we got the Woodby on the flu, which happens either March, April of the year. Okay, that's what it was, boom, check it off, let's pay attention to it next year, make sure that's all there, right? And that's what we're saying.
That's one of the things that I wanted to bring up tonight, is if I could sit down with all of you here.
Okay.
Budget people, sit down and talk and discuss the budget, train me a little bit, and find reconciliation with the budget.
What we needed then, if you want to do this, first things first, the business plan, you're still working on the business plan with Bill, but it looks like the business plan was approved, but we never did approve a plan for the, you presented one a long time ago, and then it sort of went back for taking a look at it, and it never got approved.
And it's gonna be ready.
That'll be ready. And so if we have that, that could feed into the program review really easily. And so we can get some of this type of thing addressed then. Now, Steve and Kirk, and when are you guys three in the summertime? Because it'll take two or three meetings to do a proper study, because we're gonna have to get the pieces on the table, we're gonna have to take a look at the pieces, and then we're gonna have to get the budget integrated with those pieces. So you're gonna have three little meetings, or you're gonna have one desperate day where we're trying to do homework as we go?
I'll make myself a little...
Yeah, is there amongst us better than the others if we're looking at it before August?
Not August 23rd.
Not August 23rd, okay. That's a pretty limited demand. July is good, then June's good. How about Kirk, was there time that's hopeless for you?
Probably June would be best for me.
So July would be better?
No. My thought is this, I'd like to sit down with Gino and Aaron and check out QuickBooks. I think we've already looked at the budget that's, this report that's presented, and it's very difficult to read. It doesn't really give a good year-to-date, it's, I think, more based on by what we may have, or expect by May, and percentage of revenue versus expenditures at that particular point in time, but it's not looking at a full year out. I think we could do a lot better with that. And I think we could definitely get some, QuickBooks has some graphs, colored charts, I mean, there's things you can do to make these things easy to see. And, you know, I appreciate what Dave's doing, he's just saying, look, here's, I don't know how this correlates with income, basically I'm seeing that we had 100 members, now we're down to 75. So that is a, that's a direct impact on income.
Could I make a humble suggestion?
78.
Just to, just to interject here, I think that Sean's idea of a workshop is super. I think that we need really good data for it. I think you've got a lot of ideas on how we can do it, and maybe your job should be to get the financial side to the point that we can actually plug programs onto it. If we can play with QuickBooks and we can have it there so that we have a program-oriented framework, we could actually then take the talk about programs and put it onto something, if that would be possible. And leave, maybe July seems to be best for everybody. Sometime in July to do that, would that be good? And we'll have the business plan for the swim team at the same time, that program would fit in, and this data here can be something that we're taking a look at in the sense of resources versus participation and so on. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
It is. Alan, can I ask a moment?
Yes, Steve.
Kurt, David, I really both am apologize, I'm sorry. I regret that I broke that up, that was not fair, because the more I think about it, your parents, you have the right to do whatever you choose to do, and I should not question you for that, and I apologize. And, you know, we love our kids, and I know that you are both good dads, and that you put your kids first. It's just frustrating to watch, and I know that you understand that. And, but I do, I send apologies to both of you.
Thanks, I appreciate your apologies, that's for sure. But I, Bill, I'm all for the team, I know you're in a deal right now, and it takes a while to build a team back up, and you have a big, a major transition between programs. So we have to have patience as a board to see that happen, but at the same time, we do have to look at the numbers, especially when it comes to dollars, how much can we support, how much can we subsidize?
And the whole idea is to build, is to build this team back up. That's the goal, that's the vision. That's what we're here to do, you know, whether I have one child that swims here, three children, because I got, you know, 27 at home.
27 kids?
Not 27, sorry, I got five kids, I'd like them all to swim, sometimes it feels like 27.
You have to worry for a minute.
No, but we, this program does such great things for this community. And we need to move that forward and build it back up to where, past where it used to be. You know, I, my, my idea, I didn't want to go back too far, I mean, going back to 2010, 11, it's just irrelevant, but I figured we needed to look at least at a couple of years, and that's why I started in January, I didn't want to tie this to any event specifically, just a trend. And let's work on reversing that trend and getting us back absolutely.
We have that on the table. That's on the table, that's part of the program, the swimming program, which is within life, which is a big program. And you're gonna do the accounting side on the other side, and we'll just add it to the list with the business plan, and that'll give us good documentation for the discussion on the swimming employees program outcomes. Steve, you're here generous. Northwoodby Fitness Club, any comments on it?
Brad?
Brad?
Santa Bernetti, just started, he's not here.
Nope, I just didn't know if anybody in the commission had comments on it.
He just started a program a couple weeks ago, he has like 12, 15 days now. Yeah, Felicity is working.
How about Arobit, is anything on it?
Go work out with her one time.
No. That's for you. In a month, maybe. Erica, aquatics program report, anything there that, anybody that's got a concern about, or wants to know more information on, would be a better putting on.
Erica, could we look also, since we're looking at trends, you know, as far as population goes, for each program?
I put what we have for the last year next year.
Can we go back to and see what kind of trend, and what we're looking for is long-term trends, and then what can we do as a group to change? No, ma'am, please go right ahead, they always come through.
Yeah, I mean, we can absolutely do that. I do know that it has been sustaining at around 200 for the last year, from about the April timeframe on through the summer, whereas previous years it was running below 200. So it has come off its guns, done a little bit of this, but it's mainly been going up from what I've been able to see.
Okay, and that's just something I want to look at with everything, you know?
Absolutely, yeah, I'd be happy to, and I know that Gino and I have talked at length about trying to get the marketing out to some of these new squadrons that are coming in, that don't know that we have a pool in town, to try and get their kids enrolled in our programs as well, let her be in swimming.
Okay, facilities and maintenance. Thanks, Erica.
Oh, thanks all the way, you ordered the pump.
You know, the other night, or I guess it was about a week ago, the men's locker room was absolutely torn apart with the screws taken out of the showers and everything, lasted that way for a few days. I think they're mostly fixed now, but, you know, is there some way that we can either get lock screws or do something to kid-proof this? Because I'm assuming that there are kids that are out of control, but I don't, I don't know, it's...
I would, I would, because I'd like to get also maybe a plumber to come in here, because none of these showerheads put out the same type of water, you know, showerheads grow.
It's part of the culture, you gotta know which one to go to.
I'm just throwing it out there. Because I have gotten complaints about that.
Add that to the pot.
My question is, and you may not have the answer, Mr. Kirk, is our pump gonna make it six to 10 weeks? I hate to throw that out there, but I'm gonna throw it out there right now, because I'm concerned.
Yeah, because they shut it down a couple times in the last couple of days.
That's what, yeah, it's shutting it down, let it rest, and we don't have anything going on in the pool, and then starting it back up again.
I've had complaints about pool water, the quality, and I've explained to people, hey, look, our pump is on the verge, and with Matt playing the Ouija board on, and that's probably the wrong word to use, I might get slammed for that.
That's too, that's too capital.
By Matt playing the manual recalibration of our heating and cooling, and with our pump being the way it is, that's why our pool water is not gonna be primo right now. I mean, if you don't understand that, then come in and sit down and we talk about the finances for the new pump. But I saw Erica shaking her head pretty vigorously, I know that Coach, thank you for having a backup plan in case it goes out, I'm pretty sure Erica's got a backup plan too of some sort, but are we gonna make it six to 10, or what do you think?
What's the backup plan?
If Matt's gone, Stephanie, she'll be back there hand pumping, you know, she's very...
I got the lifeguards, 20 minutes on, 20 minutes off.
Imagine I got 20 hundred kids, we can't...
We can call around, there's some emergency.
Yeah, and Matt's got some guys that are fully aware of our situation, and they're ready to take our call if we can't get it started again. It has a tendency to shut down and you get kind of a run-out situation here, and the valve alarms go off and we start it back up again.
This is not...
It sounds like a train wreck in the back.
It's just something to work on, we're working on some options.
Yeah, we can call just about everybody that might have an extra pump later, and ask their, we've done all that.
Does, does chemical levels have any effect on the longevity of this type of equipment? I mean, for example, if we're at the 2.5 parts per million chlorine that the county said that we could run versus the three that they were recommending, or some higher lower than that?
The whole problem is this pump, it sat out so long.
But not speaking about this pump specifically, because I know that years of neglect and, you know, years of having the blinders on and not paying attention to the things sitting outside on the corner have led to its ultimate extremely premature demise, but does, with this new pump moving forward, does that have any kind of effect on how long we can expect it to last?
And we're gonna look at that. We're gonna do some research, Matt's gonna do some research, and look at the toxicity and chlorine and stuff.
So we'll get an update next month then on this, or if there's a crisis, we'll have a special meeting, well, we'll have a special meeting if there's a crisis, but, yeah. Okay, the attendance report is predictable, things are, we've seen it, is there, are there any questions, or can we go on to the public record request under unfinished business? Does anyone have any comments, questions? Okay, public record passed, I think that was, Dave, you had unfinished, I thought we'd approved that.
No.
You talked to me about whether to send it to the lawyer, Nathan or me. I've been through RCWs, it complies with everything legally.
So we can sign off on it, is...
I believe you can sign off on it. If not, I can send it to Nathan, who's spending thousands of dollars.
Well, I'm happy... Well, I'm happy to take your word on that. And did we have a resolution? If not, should we make the resolution now?
No, we did. We should have made it. We had a resolution. We did not have a number on that resolution.
Yeah, that's correct. That's what. The only thing we're missing was a number on the resolution.
So we can put a number on the resolution and it's passed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that, everybody remembers that? So we're all on the same page?
Yes.
So we need a resolution number, which looks like it'll be, oh, it should be, this should be 03 and it should be 02. Okay, so this one will be, I'll just put 3 on this one.
Okay.
And the resolution for public records is 02 and I'll check that with you in a minute.
Okay.
And everybody's happy with that?
Yes.
New business, resolution to designate district auditing officer. I've got a piece of paper here. Do you all have a copy?
No.
And it, basically it's very straight. In the matter of designating the district auditing officer, whereas the district auditing officer position is the assigned responsibility of the district director. Whereas the commissioner of the, commissioners of the district did vote and approve the designation of Gino Wolf as auditing officer at a public meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the commissioners of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District, Island County, Washington, that Gino Wolf is designated as the district auditing officer. That's, would somebody move that? Or not?
Okay, I move that we.
Just approve the resolution.
Approve the resolution as stated, resolution 1403.
Yes. Seconded by Sean. Any comments?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it appropriate to use the name Gino Wolf in lieu of Frank Wolf?
We probably have to go by that.
So it should be Frank Wolf.
Frank being his first name.
Frank G. Wolf, is that acceptable? I'll just call, if I change this here, then we can get it filed with a slight amendment on it? Okay, is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. And I'll just initial the changes and I don't think we all have to.
We've got to sign it.
I, yeah, that, but just put pieces in the text. Okay, resolution to take money from the reserve fund. Last meeting, we agreed to take $16,000 or approximately from the reserve fund to cover the pump because it wasn't in our budget. And the question was, I felt strongly that we should have a resolution, but if you don't agree, then we don't have to have a resolution.
The resolution is the cleanest way to do that.
I thought it would be, yes.
So the resolution is the cleanest way to move money out of the reserve.
Do you want, would you be willing to move the resolution for $17,000? That move that $17,000 be taken from the reserve fund to meet the cost of the new pump for the pool?
Is it better to move that we, is it better to make a motion to move the sum of $15,690 plus applicable, plus applicable taxes and shipping?
That's fine with me.
Can you say that way versus a static amount? Because we don't know what that static amount is.
Yes, absolutely. That'd be better. Okay. $15,000.
Thoughts on that, Kirk?
Well, Kirk, I would prefer to move to dissolve the reserve fund. Absorb it. Buy it in and out. Just be done with that. Because I think that reserve fund, I don't know, did anybody find the resolution for that?
No, I did not find the resolution.
I think that was specifically, at least by R C W, that's set up, or can be set up from what I read, for the purposes of a stated capital goal, whether it's improving some kind of facility or...
It was to be able to replace the capital, to say the old time.
Right. So this is like an emergency repair? I don't, it's a capital repair.
Yes, it is.
It is. It definitely falls into that category, but I just, there's like kind of apples and oranges as far as what type of capital it is to be used for.
Could we, could we do that on our workshop on revenue and programs and just take a little bit out now?
I would be more comfortable doing that.
So we know what we're doing. And I'll be happy to dig through the records and try and find out exactly what the capital was.
I just, I, my issue is if we're not going to use it for, we've already, the former director took $25,000 out of it and moved it into M and O without the board's approval. And now with approval, we're going to move another 17,000. What's purpose? I mean, why was it established? If it's, if we're not going to use it for what it was established for, which I don't think we are currently, let's just dissolve it and be done.
If I could answer that, I don't know, Gino, go ahead.
No, it's just one of the things, you know, Kirk and I, Coach, met the other day. I was hoping we can, only me and Jen, I know it's not the right time now, maybe in July, reconcile our boards and help you work on that. Yeah.
What I would, what I would say, I think, very comfortably, because I can remember when we were putting money into the, into that fund and we were doing it for maintaining the building because of the capital expenditures were bigger than the operating expenditures potentially. And we could see things starting to go left the windows. And we were trying to say, well, let's hold it because we'll never be able to afford to fix the place unless we have a reserve. Now, this fits that exactly because what we talked about when we looked at the pump was, is that pump going to be big enough that in fact, if we do have renovations, it will work for the pool area? And so that was considered when we were, when we were doing it. So it does fit right into that, into that pattern.
I do recall you saying previously as well that it was to be a fund to be reserved, essentially reused in the case of a levee failure for a...
That's how that, how those fit together is that if we don't have a levee and we close the pool and we don't maintain operations here, this place is going to crash. You know, you have to have this thing working. It can't just be mothballed. Okay? And so that's how those things fit together. That's what we were looking for.
Well, here's, I mean, it's, I don't, the money's there in reserve. I think the money's there in our bank accounts. We've just got a huge influx of cash from this levee, from, you know, our receipts from the county. We don't have a problem with cash flow right now. We will maybe by October, November, December, you know, depending. But right now, we don't have a problem. We can pay for it out of the bank account, I'm sure.
So we have to be run by the budget. And it's not in the budget, the 16,000. We have to get it out of the reserve because we haven't got a line in the budget. If we're, you know, it's boss. The budget has to be.
There's other things that weren't in the budget, like the cost of the election.
Yeah. Yeah, we've, that's important.
Yeah, we do, but that's, that's our failing, not something, you know, you have to have it in the budget if you're going to have accountability. I think we're trying to do a better job.
I would like to go back maybe to 2011, reconcile stuff, see if there's any things we could.
It's okay. No, let's keep going.
I just want to make sure.
I think if we can do it for this year, we'll be doing well.
I'll reconnoitre some stuff in there. If there's a hand for fiber, if it was wrong, if I say.
That would be wonderful. If we could do this in these two workshops that we're talking about, our workshops that look like they're going to be in July, is that, that's the best time for everybody?
And so once again, I would, I would make a motion that we move the sum of $15,690 from the reserve account plus applicable taxes and costs and shipping charges to pay for the pump that we have ordered a second.
Okay, Dave, Sean, comments, questions? Any concerns? Steve, you've been quiet on this. You're okay? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. You're going to vote for it?
Yeah.
You can vote against it. Okay, all, see now, honestly, pass.
I just want to get my two cents in.
What security question, I think is a straightforward thing. I put it on there because it'd come up. You've got the answers.
Right. They got on our website, but they didn't get into the ASO or all the personal information. So it just happened to be our website.
I had a conversation with the, with the web guy yesterday. He said that this amounted to a group of hackers who are looking for scores on a scorecard, essentially. They can, they can say, hey, look, I took over your site, you know, that's one point for me, but that it didn't do anything more than just replace our homepage.
Yeah, and those just, yeah, those two programs, our website and our ASO program, all the information is just two different things. We're just getting in line.
There was no PII compromise.
Correct.
Anything else on the security question? Was it in the past now? Thank you for dealing with it. Now, we have two job descriptions here.
Yeah, it's fitness coordinator and aquatic director and can encompass this with finishing up the employee manual.
Yes.
Then working out with Bill started. We're just going to replay this, you know, the aquatic directors, which have other duties now. And since we have Brad, who does the fitness, so we're going to encompass that in the employee manual. That's all.
Yours, director. And these things as job descriptions, we can chat about, but you, the action will be you putting them in the employee manual. So are there any comments on these two job descriptions? I haven't had a chance to read them.
Yeah. My director, I'm pretty much the same. There are some changes because of additional duties. Fitness coordinator, pretty much close to what Kid Rock coordinator did, but we just want to formalize it and throw it in there. I could have just put it in there and replaced it in our employee manual, but I just wanted to renovate it.
Okay, so we have them and we could look at them and maybe comment on them the next meeting? Would that be, would that be good? One thing I'm curious about is why you have to be a swim coach?
You know, what I basically did is I took the aquatic director, the job description from 2002, 2003, or and earlier, took the aquatic program coordinator from a little later, the head lifeguard job description, and then I put them all together and that swim coach thing was on there. And I think part of the reason behind that back, and that was in the early, late 90s and even the 2000s, was if the swim coach was incapacitated at any point because he is an aquatic program per se, that the aquatic director would be able to step in and help at least to facilitate the program should be, you know, let's say Bill gets in a car accident or something like that, that I could be able to knock on litter, you know? That where...
Let's not, let's not do that.
I know, I know. I got Travis for a while.
But there is some succession planning by doing...
If there is some succession planning that he would say, you know, hey, if I'm, if I have an emergency that I have to deal with, the aquatic director can at least get the coaches going and, you know, get things going. So I think that's what that thinking had in. And because it was in there and it didn't make sense, we just went ahead and kept it there for consistency.
So is that something you already have?
Okay. The last item on our agenda is the employee of the month. Now, it sort of got stuck out here. It's usually under staff reports, but would somebody be willing to talk to Logan Fought?
Please go ahead.
Well, how come this person's nominated? Do you want me to read this little slogan here, a little paragraph?
I don't need to go for it.
Okay, we're just changing process here. Usually it's in the staff reports and somebody doesn't.
I'm still tired, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's good. You just survived. Logan Fought, as swim instructor and senior guard, Logan has taken on a lot of responsibilities, proven a capable supervisor, very helpful in training new guards and someone who is reliable and can be counted on. Logan is always willing to go the extra mile when help is needed, often jumping in with little or no notice to help programs succeed. Logan has shown presence of mind and maturity in stressful situations and meets every challenge with a ready attitude and quick smile. Thank you, Logan, for all you do. That's what this says. Is that, everybody's happy with that? Is anybody known?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I couldn't look at it.
Delete your ball player.
Yes, he was. And what I was letting my personal, wherever I found. I was very thrilled.
He was ready to help, but aren't you talking? Okay, this one here is... Okay, that covers the agenda. Are there any public comments? I hope I didn't cut everybody off, but I don't think we can do much with the job descriptions until we see that, have that chance to look at them. What was that? Did somebody move a term?
Comments?
Would you like comments? Yes, yes, I've got public comments I just said.
There's, there's, Dave brings a good point. In between public comments and next meeting, there's supposed to be board comments.
Okay, well, let's put board comments in there then. Any, no, no public comments? Board comments? It sounds like we have board comments, but...
No, actually, more questions. Did we decide that we were going to meet in for a workshop in June?
July.
In July?
Yes. We haven't set a date and we haven't set a process.
Can we talk to that?
I think what we need to do, and I know it's going to be painful, you mentioned a couple. I think we move out of this room to the senior center. I'll pay the 10 bucks to rent the senior center. That's not a problem. And we sit there, I, well, I'm going to use your card, don't worry. I'm good. And I say, we get the room at the senior center, because it's got to be a public meeting, right? Even if, even if we call it a workshop, it's got to be a public meeting. And as long as we don't make a motion, it can be quick. We open it, we move directly to the workshop and find comments under workshop on the YouTube thing or however we do it and make no, you know, no motions are made. And then we adjourn the meeting afterwards, right? Now, I suggest we just find a weekend or that works or Saturday. And I know Sundays are kind of hard days and we're talking the summer. It's either an all-day Saturday where we just sit in there and grind it out, or we do two evenings. I don't know what works best.
I think it might be a slightly different set of pieces because we have two big things that come together in this workshop. We've got the accounting potential. And over the years, QuickBooks has been the master that everybody says, we can't do it because QuickBooks doesn't let us. Well, you're going to have a run at that and you're going to find out what QuickBooks can do. So we can see what we can do. And we may be able to move a quantum leap ahead if we have good data on the financial side. And if you brought that in and trained us a little bit on how it works so we can talk about it. And then we have the program reviews. And these guys here are going to have to have their part of the organization sort of in shape so that we can plug all that in and then we can sit with the data. And the question is whether we want to get the financial side first and then do the expenditure side next.
Yes.
So that would be two. And that would mean that I wouldn't be brain dead because it wouldn't go for more than a hour and a half, you know?
I, I would feel very, very, very much more comfortable with that first meeting then where we talk about QuickBooks and the financial side in June, not July.
Okay, would you like to do that in June? Is that good to, three, Steve?
As long as, actually, as long as it's not the, I just remembered, we've got a daughter graduating, so the first two weeks of June are kind of for me locked in. I just, all of that, so.
Sure.
So it could be the third week, fourth week in June, I'm good with that.
Okay, third and fourth week of June. Okay, all, um...
Is that work for everybody? And then we'll do it. You said June was bad.
Oh, he did.
Well, me?
Yes, sir.
No, June was good.
Oh, June was good.
August 23rd is the one mistake that's put in there. Okay, so I haven't got a calendar in front of me.
I do.
Hey, while, while you're looking up the calendar, real quick, uh, the swim meet, uh, we were here on the Saturday because there are Special Olympics Sunday, we were here and it was a lot of fun. And, you know, from what I saw, it just seemed like it went really well, Bill. The officials, because I talked to you, because I didn't read the announcing, they, uh, they were very impressed. Just wanted to tell you, good job.
Perfectly enough Sunday.
On behalf of me, I think probably more people feel better.
How about the 21st? I'll get there.
Russ watching.
Uh, they say how long you're gonna take to mend it or?
Yeah, they'd be fine.
Four weeks with physical therapy or it doesn't work out or I'm not back.
Saturday, June 21st.
Sure.
Sure.
I said of two evenings?
Whoa.
I thought we talked about two evenings.
That's the first.
That'd be the financial.
First one.
How about 10 o'clock in the morning?
10 till Saturday.
10 till 1 o'clock maybe.
Right. I'll make some driving arrangements.
Thank you very much, you guys. And we'll set the date for the second meeting after we see how the first one.
I will take care of the senior center then.
That's June, sorry.
2:21.
Yeah.
From 10 to 1.
Still using your name.
And we'll do it at the senior center. And then for probably a week later, we'll have, we'll need all the program costs sort of worked out. So we can sit down and see them once we've been trained on some sort of a potential budget format.
I appreciate you guys sitting down with me.
Yeah, those are good with you on most times. We'll bring a cot and just in case you're still there, in case the back is still there.
Sure.
Real quick before we adjourn, I had this idea this week and I don't know if it's the right time to bring it up, it had to do with the Off Leash Dog Park. And, uh, you know, I kind of wondered what you guys thought about, and maybe we could bring this up at another time, but you know, if we could put together a dog show, having somebody do that and all the proceeds from that dog show to be poured into the Off Leash Dog Park, it's just a thought, just want to be throwing it out there.
We got some chairs, can eventually go over there and get that dog.
You know Joy Thompson?
I had somebody to consider that they said.
You know Joy Thompson?
She'd be an ideal person to say that by and see if she'd do it, it'd be awesome.
I would say, and I just bring this to the board's caution and I know Coach and I have talked about this too. We, we need to be very careful when we plan fundraising events as a taxpaying district, how we do that. And, and that is my only concern is the, um, no, no, you know, how we do that. I'm all for, I'm all for fundraisers by the swim team or fundraisers by the kids love fitness or whatever the heck we just said it was, but we have to make sure we do it correctly. Cause the auditor did find us.
I understand.
And we're working on the 501, 300.
Yeah, speaking of the fundraiser, how does the swim fund play into that?
We're not, we're not doing it right now, it's gonna be off for May. Once we get our 501.
We passed out the packets and that, that's as far as we got.
Yeah. Talking to Coach and once we get that 501.
We can talk to Joy.
I will talk to Joy.
Because if you guys pick up anything, that would be great and we can invite Gino and find out if it's legal. Is that the pump?
When you heard all those alarms going off, that's, well, it shuts and throws the boiler alarm and everything.
So that's how we know that the pump's up?